Oh, my God. Did we play hit every song?
I can't wait till tape comes on.
He is wonderful.
Yeah.
He's the entertainer.
You want to start?
You ready? August 11th, 2015, work session, remember the president?
Okay, I believe we have some folks in the Comac Volunteer Ambulance Corps here. Would you like to come up and make your presentation? Should you say that into the mic?
Richard O'Brien, Chairman of the Board of Comac Ambulances.
Tom Loonberg.
Tom Loonberg.
Chief of the Department.
Good morning.
Morning, all.
Good morning.
We're here to discuss a proposal regarding insurance billing for EMS alarms. And the reason we're proposing this, it's simply the most practical way to avoid increasing taxpayer dollars, and yet at the same time getting the revenue that's required for us to do our job. And if I give you a little background, it would certainly help. I handed out some material. Think I'm a little nervous, huh, guys?
We're really nice.
You came to our installations and I remembered very well. Our call volume has increased over the last five years by about 700 alarms annually. Now, this translates into an additional 800 hours of service required by Comac Ambulance to respond to the citizens. And let me just explain why. As you're aware, the community is growing. If you look at the Comac division between Town of Smithtown and Town of Huntington, the 40% goes to Huntington of calls and 60% goes to Smithtown. It's been that way for years and years. And even proportionately, as the alarms increase, the percentages stay approximately the same. So if you go in the southern part of our district, we cover Old North Port Road down to the expressway. The southern part of our district has grown by leaps and bounds on both sides. So if you look at the Town of Smithtown side, we now have Kohl's, we have Home Depot has put another building down there, Walmart. And what we're finding difficulty is where our headquarters is at 200 Burr, the northern part of the district, getting to the southern part of the district. We cover Long Island Expressway, parts of it, we cover New Highway, we cover Northern State Parkway, Sacto Coast. So we become, earlier I mentioned the retail side, but on the commuter side, we become a bypass for citizens coming from the east, going west to get through town. Jericho Turnpike is extremely busy. The increase in call volume is not matched by the revenues required to run the business. And for the last 10 years, we've been encouraged to borrow, and we have borrowed, but we've hit the plateau in which the monies allocated by the towns do not even cover the debt service. So we're at a point where with the increased call volume and the lack of funds, we're required to come up with a solution. We're business people. We were offering a solution. And the solution is, in the long term, reduce the taxpayers' dollars while we're granting revenue from the calls at the same time. So keep in mind, and Tom will give you some more details, the people coming through, and there are a lot of people coming through the Town of Smithtown and the Town of Huntington on their way to work and so forth, if they're involved in an EMS emergency, they don't pay for that. That's a freebie for them.
Are you talking about MVAs, basically?
Oh, anything. MVAs mostly for people coming through. But in the retail side, falls are predominant issue with older folks. And on the healthcare side, you see yourself, we now have Sloan. Sloan is expanding to another steel facility. Gerwin on the Town of Huntington side is just announcing another 245-bed facility. So they will have from Larkfield all the way over to Comac Road. Although they have privates, the privates can't always get out and they call the 911 system, which is us. So, Tom, if you'd just give an idea of...
Well, you know, Richard, let's begin again. I think because this is on TV and people will view this meeting, I think you need to explain how you operate with the funding that you receive. And how is that money allocated?
All right.
I know how it is, but you need to tell that.
I know. We're a VAC Volunteer Ambulance Corps, and there's about 17 of us in Suffolk County. The remainder of the EMS is provided by fire services, which are taxing districts. We are not a taxing district. We are on contract to the towns of Smithtown, the Town of Huntington. And each year, we negotiate by submitting our budget and requirements with the controller and the, you folks, because you've signed the contracts, how much money we're going to get. And we prepare these budgets extremely focused on what we need. And to that stage, we now, as an example, need a fifth ambulance to cover the expenses. Now, that's not something we needed for 10 years. So that's that plateau I mentioned earlier, where you reach a point, the building is totally out of space. So the fifth ambulance, we're going to have to talk about how to house it. And this is the plateau based on a call number of, call volume, which is just continuing to rise. The healthcare side of it, there are the clinics coming up all over, you know, everyone has healthcare, and it's being used extensively. Now, there's not as much turnaround as we'd like, where they go to the doctor's office and go back home. They don't. They call EMS at that point.
Okay, let's go back.
Go ahead.
So you're saying here that because you'll need an ambulance and maybe two into the future, and your building is too small, you can't continue to exist on the town's allocation of tax revenue every year?
That's correct.
Okay. And you also need to point out that this is a bifurcated ambulance corps, meaning that Huntington has to also allocate tax levy for you fellows to operate.
Yes, and we're in communications with the Town of Huntington on the same proposal.
So mechanically, we submit a budget to both towns, which is, I think, which you're just alluding to.
Right.
Explaining this. And then, I know Richard said there's some negotiation, I know that there really is negotiation. We just, or basically handled, handed a number.
Yes.
So we're a contract vendor to both towns. So we get approximately, I think it's about, we said 64, it's about 64, 36, the difference between the two towns.
Smithtown being the 64.
Correct. And then we sign a contract for the agreed upon amount with each town.
But you're...
And that's how our funding is received.
Just so the board should know, that when you submit your budget and your requested allocation, we do confer with the Town of Huntington, and both towns agree on a percentage increase.
Correct.
Okay? I don't know what that is every year, 3%, 4%? I don't know.
About 2% we've been getting.
2%?
Right.
And this has evolved into, against, again, Rich alluded to, a little over 10 years ago, in our discussions with the towns, with the controllers, really, they were the ones that suggested we start borrowing because they couldn't meet the increased needs of our budget. And there's a, there's one schedule in there, in your packet, that just shows that as your debt service, as you keep borrowing, as you all know, you're faced with it too, you increase that borrowing, it still has to be paid back. So as our budgeted numbers to repay debt service increases each year, our operating budget has increased a couple thousand dollars a year.
So you're talking about our ambulance calls, correct?
Yes, ambulance calls.
Thirty-six hundred a year.
Okay. And you're talking about doing what? What are you asking us to do here?
We're asking, we need your permission to bill insurance companies on EMS alarms. About 70% of the people throughout the United States bill Medicare and Medicaid. It's relatively new on Long Island, except the privates. Long Island, Manhasset, New York City Fire Department, Nassau Police Department have been billing for years. It's just that with such a predominance of fire services who can tax themselves, the VACs are sort of neither fish nor fowl.
So if I were to use your service at the end of the trip or wherever you take me, or...
Right.
You then will ask me for my insurance card, correct?
In effect.
In effect.
What happens is, the patient care report is submitted to the hospital. From that information, the hospital gathers your insurance and so on and so forth. We then, through an agency, grab that information and contact the insurance company and say, "We've had an EMS alarm here, and we're going to bill X." And there's separate billings. Of course, Medicare and Medicaid require a fixed number, you have no choice in that. And then at that point, we ask for reimbursement from the insurance company.
So if the person was not a Medicaid or Medicare individual, then you fixed the price that you asked for?
We, yes, we have a private billing rate, yes, for those people, yes.
But you accept whatever the insurance company would give you?
Yes, we does. Yes, we do.
And if someone doesn't have any kind of insurance at all, is people's, do you reimburse them?
I would like, I would like to say we wink at it, but we can't, the law doesn't permit that. Obviously, they will get treated, whether they pay or not pay. And then, if they have no insurance, we have to set up a program which says, "Can you give us $5 a month, or $10 a month, or whatever you can do?" But we're required by law to do that.
Well, how do you answer the question, "I'm already paying for your service in my tax bill"? Not, not the person outside the district, but the person inside the district.
The question of double dipping does come up, only because people are paying, on an average, about $90 now in their tax for ambulance service. An average ambulance call is between $1,000 and $1,500. So the $90 is a very, very old number. Our choice was to say, "Can we raise the taxpayers' dollars? Can we have a bond?" And then when we looked around, insurance was the logical answer, and other people are doing it. Why should we put a burden on the taxpayers?
Why, why does it cost between $1,000 and $1,500 on a call? How does that get...
When you amortize the cost of equipment, the cost of medications, and...
Okay, so put out medications when you, okay.
That's the average.
On one call, if it's the right call, or the wrong call, a couple hundred dollars in medication could easily be used, easily.
You referenced the new shopping district, Kohl's and Walmart and all those places. Do you have a percentage of people who are non-residents, who people don't pay the tax?
We have not collected that information. I wish we had that to be able to say that to you.
Well, give me your own opinion. Do you guess that the most, more people live out of the district than in, who receive your service?
In those locations, yes.
Yeah, that could be a nice...
I mean, overall.
No, not, not overall, but in the locations I highlighted, yes. Sloan, Gerwin, those folks, they don't live particularly in the community.
Well, shoppers don't usually live there, do they?
Exactly. Just, just one other point. We were privileged to be donated an acre and a half of land down on the southern part of the district. So our plans in building some sort of facility is to cover the southern part of the district. So we have an objective in mind, it's not near term, but it's long term, to cover that growth.
What is on the...
Where is that at?
Where is it at?
Hornet Road, just north of New Highway, on the west side.
Okay. By Comac Fire Substation.
By Substation.
It's a good, it's a good location, Sawmill's there, we should not get too many citizens.
What's the, what's the feeling from the Town of Huntington? Because you have to do both towns, obviously.
Absolutely. I believe, I've talked to the council folks down there, and I have a favorable opinion for three or four. I don't have one other. But they are getting more into the issue of technical stuff, can you do this, can you do that? And we believe we've answered all their questions, because they have contacted the New York State Attorney's Department and found that it's perfectly legitimate to do what we're doing, because it's being done upstate all over the place.
Now, a good deal of people have their own, well, not on Medicaid or Medicare, have their own insurance policy, correct? What impact would it be on that person who subscribes to an insurance program if they use this one or two times and the bill jumps up to a couple thousand dollars that you referenced?
I can't, it's included in their coverage currently.
Right. Currently, it is included in your insurance carrier.
It's, it's, it's just an untapped resource.
Just haven't been using it.
It's utilized by the private ambulance services, but not by volunteer ambulance services.
So there's no question, as most insurers, as you know, if you have a car accident, the rate goes up. Does that apply also to health insurance, do you know?
I don't believe that's going to be, since it's included in the rate already.
Okay.
They're just not reimbursing it. But you're going to be billing through all these services now, why do you need the taxpayers any longer?
Well, that's... That's what we hope down the road.
Yeah.
But since...
That is the concept, to drive down the, the tax base.
We anticipate, and it's a pretty checked out number, about $980,000 over a year, just for the Town of Smithtown, in billings. Now, all this money belongs to the Town of Smithtown. And we then negotiate in terms of, "Well, is it appropriate now to lower the leverage on the taxpayers? Or how about this fifth ambulance that we really need?" But down the road, once we get a little stabilized, there's no question, in talking to people upstate, that you can reduce the taxpayers' leverage.
Donald, you have had meetings with these folks?
I did.
Do you want to come forward and give us some ideas, what you think?
You want to sit here?
Morning, Town Board, Don Masner, Controller. I met on February 26th with the Comac Volunteer Ambulance Corps and their counsel, Brad Pinsky. And we went over the details, as Richard has alluded to, and it does seem to be a legal form of service that they can do, and billing. And I think that Richard has also identified the, most of the issues at hand, the one being, you know, do we reduce taxes entirely, or do we then allocate some towards capital funding? And I think, you know, clearly there's a need for good volunteer ambulance corps service, and, and with the volume of people that we have here, that it does seem to be some need to allocate some of the tax savings that we would probably achieve towards capital funding for them. But long range, I think Richard stated it very well, that long range, I think it stabilizes the taxes to the district, and in fact, would probably result in a decrease in the tax levy to the, to the residents, as well as obtaining service fees from non-residents who perhaps work in the HIA area, the Hop Dog Industrial Association area. That's a huge complex.
You're already serviced by Hop Dog Ambulance, VAC.
We have part of the...
Just a small portion of it.
Correct.
But we do have a separate contract with...
There's a lot of non-residents.
Hop Dog Islet Ambulance Corps.
Is Hop Dog volunteer or not?
Yes.
Yes.
So overall, my opinion is that it's, it's something that absolutely should be pursued, but we also need to dot our i's and cross our t's legally, and the Town of Huntington has been working on that. They have an associate town attorney who's working on that. There are some issues with new services that is a requirement.
What do you mean by that?
If you're, if you're billing, what additional services will be required, would be provided to the community? And I've given them documentation on that, and I, it's in your package, the additional services that would be available to us through, through funding? And it's very medical, technical type stuff, where more stuff is being pushed out into the field all the time in terms of patient care, and that's documented.
Explain that to me, because I'm lost there.
Tom...
A simple ambulance call, I dial the number and I get you guys to come and get me. Now, what service, other than picking me up and bringing me to a hospital, what other services do you provide?
Are you having difficulty breathing?
Okay.
Resuscitating.
So those are the kinds of services you're talking about? Immediate care?
Yes. Other than transport, yes, care as opposed to transportation.
Okay, so you not only transport me, but you also take care of my needs? And there's a charge for that?
Yes.
Okay.
You'd be administering medications as well?
Oh, absolutely.
Was it considered an advanced life support alarm or a basic life support alarm? ALS, BLS, different charges, different fees for those?
So New York State says that you can't just start billing the insurance carriers and then just reduce taxes, but that the ambulance squad needs to enhance their services. So the fifth ambulance and perhaps increasing their location and ability to service the residents in the southern tier would probably qualify for that, but that has to be checked out. And the only other last issue is the indigent care issue and the copay issue. They have to pursue collection, the billing company, rather, and the town has to pursue collection of the deductibles that the bill, that the insurance company doesn't cover.
I'm lost.
Okay.
A person who's indigent, what happens?
So here's what happens, Supervisor. We enter into a contract with the ambulance squad.
Yes.
So as we currently do, we fund them just shy of a million dollars. So let's say we enter into this contract with them to provide that service. They then hire a billing agency to do the billing to the patients who they carry in there, and they do the collections. That money goes into a sweep account, which is owned by the Town of Smithtown. Okay? So that cash account, which is going to increase our workload to reconcile and be sure that the insurance carrier deposits all the money and then everything balances out. That money is ours to distribute, to use, to pay the contractual amount to the ambulance squad. And, and so those patients who were billed have a $25 or $20 copayment that has to be collected by the billing company. We can't just say, "Well, for certain people, we're going to pursue collection of it, and this guy's a good guy," or, you know, "They don't make enough money, so we're not going to collect that." We have to pursue everybody evenly.
Is there going to be an administrative fee for all the extra work?
They charge about $32, I think, per billing the insurance carrier does.
Which will be remitted to you?
It'll be probably a reduction to the amount that we collect from the insurance proceeds. But we have to, and then the Town Board is going to be asked to make a policy decision at some point. That policy, I don't really know yet, but, and I don't, not prepared to advocate for one, but there's going to be a policy as to whether or not those copayments are waived or are pursued.
It sounds like they're going to be self-sufficient in a period of time. Why do they have to go through us any longer? Why can't they stand on their own?
You, you are, in effect, our Board of Commissioners, and that's how the corporation was originally set up. I would like to think about that answer, because that almost pushes us into privates, but I'd, I'd like to think about that answer.
For an indigent person, then would Medicaid be billed for that?
Probably, yes.
Can you just tell me, a volunteer ambulance, you're volunteers and you run an ambulance for the town, but you do have certain people that are on payroll for 911, is that how it works, or?
We do have people on...
You need somebody, right?
On payroll, period. They dispatch for us.
Yes.
They keep the building clean. And the way the future's going, when we run out of volleys, they're trained to go on ambulances. And you'll see more of that across Suffolk County, where more paid personnel's involved.
So a resident of Comac could eventually look forward to paying less in taxes, because difference is going to be made up by the billings.
Yes, yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
You mentioned something before about advancing capital money. Why, why would that occur? Who said that? I think you did.
If you look at financing from two points of view, fixed costs versus capital.
Right.
We get into additional expenses, significant additional expenses. When we talk about capital, new things come along, the fifth ambulance, building a building down the south part of the district to cover all that. Those are long-term projects. That, even though the medical expenses are going up, they don't affect it to the degree of such as running out of space in buildings, or perhaps hiring more personnel down the road to do more things. That's where the big expenses go.
I'm missing the cap, I'm missing the capital part.
Oh.
For the ambulance?
We just, in terms of communications to you folks, try to call it capital, so you'd understand why we're spending this additional money over the tops of what you've always given us.
So you, but you used the word advance, I'm missing something here.
So Supervisor, if, if we were to keep the taxes at the same level as we are right now, say it's a million dollars.
Okay.
And they were also to do the billing, there would be a windfall of $900,000, because the billing would be $900,000. So the issue is, how much do you reduce the taxes? Do you reduce the taxes down to $500,000, which gives you 500 plus 900 is 1.4, and $400,000 allocated towards capital for their...
Meaning a new ambulance or building or something.
New ambulance, and/or a new building, or what other...
So you have to make a decision as to whether or not you're going to lower taxes, or you're going to, this Comac ambulance is growing, 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 and you have to invest in the future.
Right. And as Councilman McCarthy actually pointed out, at some point, the capital needs will have been satisfied and the taxes could go down to minimal support, hopefully, you know, and the insurance carrier costs will go up, and, and people are paying their premiums anyway, towards their insurance.
So initially, the taxes will not go down?
That's a Town Board decision.
No, 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 it's, it's black and white. If they're going to, I'm assuming that you have a number in mind of what you would collect based on your prior calls?
Correct, we do.
So if you have that number, why would the taxes not go down?
Unless they invested that money in buying a new ambulance or building a building. That's the decision, right?
That's, that's the issue right there. And we would sit in front of the controller at that point, and the control's likely say, "But, you know, reduce it 3%, and we can do this." We can work that out. We, we really can.
And the state is requiring that there's some, they're asking, "What are you going to do if you will start to bill this insurance company?"
That's exactly...
So, so that's going to be something that will be needed, satisfy the state.
Yeah, and you'll see a document in the back there, Foggier Capital Projections. You'll see what the thoughts were and where the money would be going.
If you calculate in, you're going to need ambulance crews, because overhead comes with feet, and that's really going to get expensive. Have you, have a time limit, what timeframe were you figure you're going to have to have paid ambulance crews?
No, not a timeframe, personally. What, I don't know why, but we just don't get one alarm at a time. We get three or four at a time.
It's as you say, five ambulances. How do you run five ambulances with...
Right, we run out of resources.
People.
Because of the economy, we've done very well with the volleys. They want to get into healthcare, they want to try it out and so forth, but it's, we just get overwhelmed at some point, resource-wise. But we do not see today, hiring paid personnel, just in case, so to speak. But we...
When you get overwhelmed, what do you call it, ambulance from Smithtown or Hop Dog?
That is correct. That's correct.
The fifth ambulance is generally because one ambulance is broken at any point in time.
Oh, it's not because you need more people then, because if one's broken...
That's generally the biggest issue for us right now, is that one is normally out of commission for some, even if it's a minor repair. And we are getting three and four alarms at the same time, frequently. And going back to your original question, was we have one paid paramedic 24/7 on duty.
Does that person answers the phones?
No, no, we've had that person for 12 years, thanks to you folks, and we were the leader in the county on having, that's the highest quality of medical professional you're going to get out in the field, and we've had them 24/7.
That person goes in the ambulance?
They have their own responder car. They are almost first on scene all the time.
First response.
Yeah.
The departments have that as well.
Yes, yes, they do.
But who sits in the office, a volunteer?
A dispatcher? No, now they're mostly paid, which say 80% are...
You have to have someone.
Oh, yes.
But all the other, the ambulances are staffed by volunteers, otherwise.
So if this Town Board agreed to permit that, you still need to have the other town agree also? Because you can't work with just one town permitting the billing and the other town not permitting.
It, it, it's feasible, but not practical. You are independent, and you could make that decision all by yourself, and yes, we could bill only in the area of the Town of Smithtown. We certainly prefer not to do that.
Do you anticipate any, excuse me, any resistance from the Town of Huntington to this plan?
They were slow in the beginning on getting the concept, where Smithtown, Town of Smithtown picked right up on it. So they've gotten into a great amount of detail on the subject, which works for both, because then Don, as well as your counsel, could get immediate answers to the question. But no, I've talked to all the council people, and I think we're okay. It should be a joint agreement. Yes.
Okay, anybody have any other questions?
No.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Will maybe give you our decision?
Thank you.
Thank you. I forgot my opening line, because I got nervous.
Do you have a timeframe is the one you need this decision?
Could we...
Do you have a timeframe?
ASAP is better for us, because then the money starts being collected.
Okay. Do you want to tell us your opening line?
We're going to celebrate 50 years of service to the community next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're celebrating 350.
I know.
Yep.
You all have that actual resolution for the sale of surplus equipment, which will be read on today? Is there a site plan to discuss?
Good morning. It's Peter Hans from the Planning Department. We have two site plan applications for the Board to consider this afternoon, acting as the Board of Site Plan Review. The first is a Verizon application located at Holy Cross Church on Nichols Road in Wisconsin. It's been before the planning board. Essentially, what they're doing is they're taking the existing bell tower that's located at the church and raising it 10 feet. In essence, the tower will still look the same, and telecommunication equipment will be housed within the bell tower.
All internal?
All intern... Well, there is some equipment to be located on the ground over in this area.
But internal in the tower?
Yeah, you won't see the panels. Recommending approval with one condition, that they basically obtain the necessary permits from the building department. Board have any...
Yeah, tell the difference.
Ma'am?
So that's for sell?
Sell, correct. The other application is the Sports Arena, located on Broadley Avenue, behind McDonald's and Mercedes. They're proposing a 6,300-square-foot addition. The Board previously saw it as a commercial public recreation use, so it was a Town Board special exception. They have received approval approximately five months ago. We're recommending approval with one condition, that they obtain the necessary permits from the building department.
Is that the New York Sports Arena?
It's the...
Yes.
Well, it's Long Island Sports Arena.
Long Island.
It's right behind the McDonald's.
Yeah.
Right down in the back there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know there's one down there.
They removed the...
I thought it was New York, and they called it, but maybe it's not.
They had batting cages. The batting cages weren't doing well.
Oh, it's a different spot, okay.